Live on Facebook.
And recording.
Terrific. If six o'clock on my dial, dial, there's an old term. All right. Welcome, everybody. This is the Swamaco Village Board Meeting for Monday, March 7th, 2022. The time is six o'clock. At this time, I would like to call the meeting to order, and I would look for a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor by Trustee Ward to approve the agenda. I have a second by Trustee Rodden. Is there any discussion from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Thank you. Let's all stand and say the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Okay, item number five, presentations. This evening, we have a new Recreation Director to introduce, one Mr. Nicholas Lemke.
Hello, welcome. Just a little quick background on myself. I'm originally from O'Connell. I attended UW Lacrosse and graduated with a Recreation Management Degree. My first job in the field of Parks and Rec was in Madison, South Dakota. I served as a Recreation Supervisor in that role for over nine years. Moved back to Wisconsin and served as a Recreation Supervisor for the city of West Bend for five-plus years. Look forward to serving the village as a Recreation Director, working with the residents, and providing recreational opportunities. Glad to be here. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're thrilled to have you onboard. You went through quite the gauntlet between our Administrator and our trustee, Mr. Andrews, and we look forward to working with you and all the wonderful things that you can point out that we haven't taken advantage of here in Swamaco. Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you.
All right, moving on, public appearances. Item number six. So at this time, the public may address the Village Board on items other than those scheduled on the agenda. No action will be taken on those by the Village Board at this time. However, the item could be referred back to committee or staff for follow-up. If those persons wishing to speak would approach the microphone and provide your name and address, we would love to hear from you. Good evening.
Good evening. Scott Sonniband, 2795 Stone Creek Circle, Swamaco. I'm just here because I was wondering if the Village Board would consider revisiting roadway restrictions. I know that it's a big deal out here in Swamaco, and they are needed in some areas at some period of time. But just recently, you guys are well aware of the Chambers development, right?
Mm-hmm.
I have six homes under construction in there. I had two more basements scheduled to go this week, which I canceled, which is not a problem. But we're having some issues with, you know, getting trusses delivered, getting concrete for basement floors poured. Some of the things that I did not get done, I mean, are costing me, you know, months, could be, you know, more than two months of time on each project. So, you know, I've lost two houses, and now I'm losing another month, another house, another month, another house. And it's having a pretty, pretty good impact on, on my business. So while I don't, I guess, expect or even ask you guys to forget about roadway restrictions in general, I'm wondering if there's some happy medium where maybe you don't put restrictions on the urban cross-sections or the roads that were built within the last, you know, ten years. When that subdivision was built, it was built, you know, in accordance with all the other neighboring communities that don't post roads, as far as, you know, fifteen inches of stone and compaction tests, and you guys inspected everything along the way. Or else if the roadway restrictions are on, if they would be maybe removed at a sooner point in time, that it doesn't have to wait for the, the most shaded rural cross-section road where there's frost gate out in the, you know, out in, further out in Swamaco, then maybe we'd have a shorter timeframe. My other thought is even if you guys want to do a permit, I know some municipalities law issue a permit where you come in and you pay fifty bucks, or a hundred bucks, or a thousand bucks. And you're allowed to run trucks, you know, before 10:00 a.m. if it freezes the night before, or something like that. Just wonder if there's some, you know, something you guys could talk about if there'd be a way to make it a little more builder-friendly.
Andy, let me ask you this. Well, maybe you too, Scott. Is the, is it just the base course down on asphalt right now, and the finish course will be down in the summer?
Correct. The binders lay the surface.
What kind of impact would trucks going in and out of there right now have into that subdivision?
It would have a lot of effect. So we've seen about four inches of frost out below the roadway in full-sun areas now, which Chambers is majority full-sun, with only the binder on there yet. Roads built, you know, built to our standards. It's got fifteen inches of stone, but that fifteen inches still holds moisture. That moisture hasn't cut out of that roadbed yet. It's up to you guys. It's an investment that we have here as a village. We have thirty-five million dollars worth of roads out there, and I always, you know, we always do what we can to protect them. And this is one avenue we have to protect them.
So do we?
I know it hinders builders and hinders a lot of operations, but, I mean, it's the risk you take if you open it up prior or, or later than it should be.
Let me ask you this. Do we have the opportunity to look at section, opening up sections, potentially?
It can be done. We've found in the past, we've tried it, and it becomes more confusing than anything because it runs into, he said, you know, this road was open and it wasn't, and it got to be more confusing for us and people like, you know, doing deliveries and scheduling deliveries. So we've usually held it to one, it's open for everybody at one point in time.
Well, either way, we can't look at it today. It's not on the agenda.
Right, right. Could we refer this to, would Public Works be the right place to have this discussion?
I think so.
So I think that, you know, there's a lot of experts on that Public Works Committee who could discuss this, and you could present the issues that are here. And I think we should look for, my opinion would be, we should look for a recommendation from Public Works. I don't, how's the rest of the board feel about that?
I agree.
That's fine.
When's the next Public Works meeting?
It'll be on March 22nd.
Okay. All right, so let's, let's get that on the agenda for Public Works. Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Take care.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Welcome, welcome. Dan Light, 6164 Highway 570 Pier. I'm here tonight to, I got some, I guess I got a question about, you have a refuse hauler permit that I guess I'm required to get. I'm a small hauler. I provide dumpsters for builders, building new homes and remodeling and so forth. So I guess the biggest question I have is the, what I feel is an extremely high fee that it's charged yearly, and, and just question whether this permit is really necessary. I guess, how does it benefit the, the residents of Swamaco having this permit? And so, just looking for a little feedback on that.
Okay. Well, I mean, in, in general, the permit's out there because as we have haulers, haulers take it, haulers take a larger toll. This is really, your bailiwick, much more than mine. This is our local expert in such areas. So the only comment that I was going to make is, and this is based on discussions we've had before, this is, haulers tend to take a greater toll on our roads than the average citizens. So if you'd like to go ahead.
Yeah, no, I'll refer to Andy, but essentially, that's it. I mean, we've had this permit on our books for a long time.
Sure.
And every year, we keep it about the same, and it was a lot of years that we kept it the same. And was it three, four years ago we increased it? And it hasn't moved since then either.
Right.
So I believe most of the haulers pay it. I don't know, you know, in your particular case, why you wouldn't, but it's a standard, it's a standard permit fee that we have for our community based on the type of roads that we have out here.
I guess, why, why should a hauler or pay and the guy that's hauling the concrete or bringing in building supplies, or gravel, or stone, or dirt, and anybody else bringing supplies or stuff needed for construction that they're not charged a fee?
That's a, that's a good question.
There was, there's an exemption for haulers of material like that under the refuse hauling chapter in the state statute.
Okay.
I don't have it printed out, but I did look at it after I talked to the handful of haulers. This has been a subject this year that seems to be an issue with people wanting to pay. You know, it's a year we've kind of did a good inventory of who's all hauling here in the village, and we didn't want to fight every one of them, saying that we need to have this fee paid, and you need to carry this permit to operate the village. So this is one of the individuals that we contacted, and I did, like I said, looked it up. And you are exempt if you're a soil hauler, and it goes on, on the materials, the type of materials. But refuse hauling clearly has its own definition for allowance of a municipality to regulate what they haul and if there's a permit required.
What is the fee?
Five hundred dollars annually, and that's in our fee, our fee schedule.
I think this would be best Public Works. Again, this is a Public Works item.
When's the last time that you looked at those fees?
We approved them yearly with our fee schedule.
We approved them. Well, when's the last time you actually discussed them?
It used, it got raised, I believe, from two-fifty to five-hundred, like three or four years ago. And I think the basis of that was because of the impact it does have on our roadways and, you know, any way to recover some of those cost of pixels, damage, you know, that's due to this refuse hauling.
So I think, I think Trustee Rodden is right. I think this goes back to Public Works. But the question specifically for Public Works is that the fee that we're charging, the impact fee, you know, be prepared to share, you know, what is the total number of, what's the total dollar amount of impact fees that we are recouping in terms of these permits versus the amount of damage that we're incurring on our roads? You know, we need to put that equation together. I'd like to see Public Works try to identify what those numbers are and to see if there's any balance to it.
Oh, there, and you're not talking huge dollars. I mean, you're talking less than ten haulers, so I would say less than five thousand dollars total.
Right. So, so I guess my point is, for Public Works, when they look at that, I would assume then the damage to our roads, probably, the, the cost to repair our roads is significantly greater. But I'd leave that to Public Works.
Well, I guess, you know, if I'm paying this fee, but as the last guy was up here stating, I cannot go in and empty or deliver that dumpster on a construction site. Is that correct?
That's correct. I looked, I thought possibly there was an exemption for refuse hauling for weight limit season, and I have not known much.
But yet, the, the normal, whoever picks up the, the weekly trash and, and the guy that's emptying dumpsters at the businesses, they can run the roads they need to run to pick up the garbage?
That is correct. Anything vital to the operation of a business is not allowed to be shut down or the village's contracted hauler, but they do carry the five hundred dollar permit.
Okay. But they're running that road weekly, and some weeks, twice a week. And I'm coming into the village maybe twice, three times a month. It just doesn't seem fair. I guess that's what I'm getting at. I mean, these trucks.
It's not fair.
These trucks are running the roads weekly, and I'm, right now, I can't run the roads to get at containers, the few that I have in the village, till the weight limits are off. So, you know, I'm, it just, it just doesn't seem right. Five hundred dollars is a lot of money for, you know, maybe, right now, I have four containers in the village, so I got two in the new subdivision just across the way here, so, I don't know. I just, what about dump trailers? Do they need a permit?
No, if you're a refuse hauling operation. I guess if you're a business with a dumpster, then you would have a permit, yes. But if you're just hauling refuse, you, and you're not.
But if a dump trailer is out on a construction site, do they need a permit to haul?
Not if you're not a hauling business. If they're not in the trash hauling business, you do not need a permit.
So I don't, that doesn't see, I'm doing the same thing they are. I'm providing a, a place to put their, you know, leftover building materials, unused building materials, whatever. Whether the guy has a dump trailer or dumpster, what's the difference?
You're a trash hauling business and they're not.
So I could provide a dump trailer.
You're not on the agenda, so we wouldn't be allowed to make a decision.
No, that's fine. I'm just asking.
I, I think that you're coming up with a lot of interesting details, and I think that Public, Public Works is actually the place to have that discussion and have them look at that.
Sure.
I mean, in advance.
I'd appreciate that.
In advance of that meeting, come with your points and present them to the Public Works Committee and those, those individuals, and they'll make a recommendation to the board. And meanwhile, if you, you obviously have a copy of, of the, of the ordinance here, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So we can all prepare. I think that would be a lot better time spent, I think, to, to try to get your questions answered.
Sure.
Perfect.
And to be clear for you two, I work for the landfills for Waste Management. I do not work for our hauling company.
Okay.
So if you think there's any favoritism or anything like that, no, there isn't. I, I don't, I work for the landfills.
Yeah. No, it just, you know, it just, even like a two-tiered system, you know, high-end and low-end users, or something, just.
Something to bring up there?
Yeah. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else for public comments? All right, hearing none, we'll move, we'll, go ahead.
I did receive a call from a citizen about that maybe we should look into updating our, our website because there's one business in particular that is no longer in business in the urban edge area, Best Boutique, and then it still shows that on there. So I was wondering if someone could just look into updating our website with businesses that are no longer in operation.
Do you know where that is? Because I don't know where we list businesses.
It must have been, it must have been a picture.
That's what I'm thinking.
I don't know where that would be, but okay. We'll look into it.
One last thing. Hats off to Andy's team, too. I got a call from a resident yesterday on Hidden Lake Lane. They had washed out on the east end of that road, and Andy's team got out there, put cones up, and, at least I think he put cones up. Yeah. Got, the whole solar got washed out, and
Oh, no.
Could have been a, a dangerous situation, especially with the new fresh snow, so, thank you, and hats off to your team.
Okay. Anything else? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to item number seven. Item number seven is the consent agenda. This evening, we have previous minutes of the Village Board Meeting dated 2/21/22. We have item B, Municipal Court, February 2022 report, and we have C, Animal Control, January 2022 report.
A motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I have a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda as presented by Trustee Rodden.
Second.
I have a second from Trustee Eckert already. I'm sorry. Any further discussion from the board? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Thank you. All right, moving on to item number eight, public hearing. A request by L. and M. Landscape Supply for approval of a conditional use to allow for outside sales of mulch and landscape supplies on parcel SU 791-4, located on the east side of East Deerfield Avenue, approximately one mile north of Lineville Road, and it is owned Highway Business Zoning Administrator Dunks.
Thank you. The proposed site will be located on a gravel pad of under fifteen thousand square feet. A larger yard, yard shed would be placed on the site to serve as the site office. All materials will be kept outdoors. The site is currently used as a drop site for stone removal. Thus, the driveway is to nowhere that exists today. Apparently, they've been also dropping some tree stumps and, and yard waste and stuff out on that site and whatnot, which we wouldn't want that to continue with this landscape site. The driveway.
Landscape is doing it? The landscape is dropping the?
The current property, the, the property owner is doing that right now.
But not the landscape place?
They're not operating out of there yet.
Okay, okay.
No, it's not the company that's applying for this. The current, the driveway apron and curb cut needs to be brought up to Village Standards. And staff would request that that be part of this approval prior to any business being operated. Your planning commission motion also included a condition that the address be issued that has been taken care of already. So your planning commission recommendation was for approval of the conditional use with the driveway apron and curb cut brought up to Standards prior to opening, the address be applied for, which already has been, and it's displayed, meeting requirements of all our applicable ordinances, regulations, and reviewing agencies, and the site will be used for prepared materials only. So no additional dumping of any other yard waste and whatnot on that site. Thank you.
All right, other questions for zoning Administrator Dunks on this item?
There's no, oh.
Oh, I've got to open it up for public. So nothing from the board at this time?
No, it seems like a good use.
Okay. I would look for a motion then to open this up for public comment.
So move.
Thank you, motion to open up this for public comment by Trustee Schneider. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second from Trustee Ward. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. We are open for any, anyone who wishes to make any public comment or have any discussion on this, please come to the mic, provide your name and address, and we'll hear what you have to say.
Hi, I'm Michael Brandt from 1125 Babe Miss Courts. I'm also a property owner nearby. As you know, I'm developing a, a building in, in that proximity. As a, as a business owner and a CEO, I certainly support business and development in Swamaco, and as I'm currently in the process of doing that. But I do have some concerns. I want to make sure that it's clear and that they're properly addressed, and it sounds like some of what Steve just said may be addressing some of my concerns already. I drive by there every day on my way to work, and in the current state right now, there's an old dump truck out there, plow implements, broken signs, a, a big pile of yard waste and debris that's been piling up in the back next to the snow that's there, not exactly conducive to, to a nice piece of property on the highway. What I'm concerned is that if, if this isn't done properly, and it continues to be turned into a dumping ground, or it becomes a very disorganized, ugly area where there's a bunch of piles just randomly pushed around and it's not taken care of, you might think of things like, if you go by Scenic View Nursery on your way to the yard waste place, for instance, you know, that place has been there a long time, but it is very sloppy, very messy. There's a lot of debris around there. It does not look good. And in most other yard, you know, where you sell landscaping, mulch, and stone, unless it's done something like McAllister Landscaping, that's very nice-looking. It's very organized. When you go there, there's other places that are not. So that is, that's my concern, is that this, this place here would, would not be, would not look good for Swamaco since it's being right on the highway, and would not be good for nearby adjacent property owners. As you know, I'm putting up a four-and-a-half-million-dollar Class A industrial facility there, and putting a lot of investment in there, and the idea is that I'm hoping that like-minded people are going to come by and invest in that property similarly as well. Why, certainly, having a landscape place nearby doesn't, doesn't offend me. The way it looks, the way it's operated, the type of buildings that are on there, the quality of those buildings and the quality of the operations would be of grave concern to me if it was not done properly. There are a number of covenants and restrictions for the land. When I purchase the land, that I have to follow. When my building goes up, I have to have a certain amount of brick and facing material. The building has to be of certain quality, and, and there's a number of other things that have to be followed. So I don't know much about this project, so I'm not going to, I don't want to condemn it, but I do want to definitely raise the concerns that we make sure that it is properly administered and that it would be conducive to what the future of this property is going to look like here in the next, the next year after my facility is put up. So those are, those are my concerns, and I would hope that perhaps that we would, maybe there's something else that could be, or maybe I could understand the project better, or just ensure that you've looked at all these concerns and that we don't create an eyesore in an area when we're trying to develop something and make it, make it special in that quarter, because I know there's a lot of other people who have invested money in that, that area as well. I'm sure they would, wouldn't want it to become a dump.
So Mr. Brandt, I'd share a couple of things from planning and zoning with you. Yes, that'd be great. Maybe there were some discussions, because a lot of this were discussions that we had. So by making this a conditional use, it can be revoked at any time.
Okay.
A conditional use can be removed. Also, there are a couple of stipulations. One of the stipulations was there's no grinding of material. It's only the sale of finished material on that piece of property. The other thing that was mentioned, as zoning Administrator Dunks mentioned, is that material right now is being placed there by the owner of the material, the current owner, not the leases of that. And then the other stipulation that was added, and is listed here, is the site is current, the driveway apron and curb cut still needs to be brought up to Village Standards. The staff would request that this be required prior to opening any business. So I, I, I don't know that there's any way to address all of your concerns, and, but I think that there's a few elements here that speak a little bit to it. One is the conditional use. So if things aren't being followed, this use can be revoked. The other thing is that it's, this is, this is a patient way of moving that piece of property in the right direction, asking for the, the curb to be added, those elements to be added. That's a slight upgrade to the property. I'm not sure how we get to the dumping aspect of it, right? My hope is that if it becomes, i- if the value of the property is seen as a place where people coming in the highway will buy mulch, or whatever that might be, and it's kept in an orderly fashion, maybe it expands into a garden place, right? And then maybe somebody sees the value of that property and sees the business that's going on there and the number of folks that are there, and then they're willing to move in there, and then that eliminates the yard waste problem. So that was a thought process behind. Like I said, probably not going to alleviate all of your fears. It certainly wouldn't alleviate all of mine, but that was kind of the thought process when it came to planning and zoning.
Yeah, that, that, that sounds good. It sounds like you have looked into it. And again, I've, you know, I'm, I'm a business supporter. I definitely don't want to torpedo anybody's ambitions to try to do something creative with property, as long as we understand that it's not going to turn into a, a dump like we have some other places in Swamaco that sell landscaping supplies and hold stumps and other things around. That would not be a good look for Swamaco or for this area. But certainly, having business and a place where I could go and get mulch very quickly right down the highway would certainly be beneficial. So again, as long as you're, we'll keep an eye on it and, and make sure that it is, it's done in a tasteful manner. I'll definitely support it even with my own business.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for your consideration.
Anyone else who would like to speak to this?
Good evening. I'm Kent Davis, 2411 Wilding Way, Swamaco. And I was actually here at the planning meeting a few weeks ago, and I had an understanding. It would be my mistake. I thought the party that was requesting this was the same party that owned the property. I didn't realize that there'd be some kind of a land lease rent that was happening there. So what they were asking for, and even if it would have been the same property owner, I said that evening, I'm not looking to push back and stop or eliminate that type of use for it. Just that I was asking that, that, that existing material that's on-site be removed is not part of the project, not to be added to, but actually removed from the property. When the driveway went in, I had checked with Steve just to see what the purpose of that was, and it was to be used for storing snow during the winter. And again, I didn't push back on that. That's fine. It'll come and go as the seasons change. But when that started happening, and then when this request came in, I thought, you know, this is something that should be addressed. That's not what the property was intended use, and, and with what's happening out there now will not help the situation to continue promoting the subdivision. I don't know if you have any questions or thoughts, but that's, if there was some way to, again, not, not stop this activity happening, but put it into a scenario that, that, that property by the owner, either before he can lease it or some sort of a timeframe that he's limited to, that it needs to be removed by. I guess I'll let you all work out that, if that's something to be gone down the road on, but that's, that would be it for me.
I don't think we have any limitations in terms of the storage of tree stumps or yard waste in those locations.
Well, at a minimum, I think they should discontinue that operation. I'm not sure if that would be in, because it's a commercial use, if that'd be in violation of any DNR requirements either for composting or yard waste-type operations. I don't know when it crosses that line under their regulations. I know our yard waste is regulated. If you look at what Howard has, it's regulated as a compost through the DNR. But I don't know what those thresholds would be on when it would actually. But I think as a condition, you would, at minimum, require that that cease and no additional material. and no additional material be brought to that site.
Yeah, I would like to see that. The only thing is, do we have, is that stipulated within our ordinances or within our zoning? Because right now, we're zoned as highway business vacant land. So, within that zoning highway business vacant land, does it allow for that type of material? Or does it not mention that type of material?
It can be part of the conditional use that it gets cleaned up. We're granting them a conditional use of that site.
As a conditional use, you can.
Put any conditions we want.
If this does not get approved, I'm not sure what we would do to have it removed other than having that discussion with the DNR if this has truly become a yard waste site. I would say it probably violates your outdoor, your requirements for outside storage regardless.
So, that should be, that should be a discussion with the owner then? So, that should be the Village of Swamaco contacting the owner and saying, you're violating our outside storage, right? If we put a conditional use on, if removal of that is, if we make removal of that yard waste part of the approval of the conditional use, the folks who are applying for the conditional use aren't the folks who own the property and have responsibility for that yard waste. The owner has responsibility for that yard waste.
But if the owner wants this conditional use and these people to use their property, then he would clean that up.
Right, but the approval, the owner isn't listed as an individual for this conditional use.
I realize that, but the owner is obviously writing some sort of agreement with the leases, and the owner has to understand unless he cleans that up, that these leases aren't going to be able to lease that land.
But we don't need to run this through the leases. We can run this directly through the owner and say, owner, you need to clean up this property regardless. See, the issue is this, if we make this a conditional use, the owner says, you know what? I don't feel like doing it, I don't care about this leasing this, I'm not going to lease it. We still have junk on that property. So, if we go the other route, which says, owner, listen, this violates our, this violates our ordinances for depositing yard waste, then the owner takes care of that. So, I just, I think we need to take that direct route and go to the owner with it.
We can do both, too.
Your conditional use goes with the land. So, technically, it is issued to the owner of that property.
Okay.
The applicant, yes, is the future lesee of that.
Okay.
But it does go with the land. If Elliott Investments sells the property, that conditional use stays there.
Oh, right, 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 right.
At least I'd like to see if they can just stop before it got any bigger. I don't want that whole thing turning to just a nasty compost.
I think it's got to be, I think it has to be stopped and removed.
I agree.
I mean, if this is truly in violation of what we have in Swamaco, it needs to be removed, and I think that that falls on the shoulders of the owner.
And this would be a very good time to do it, but I think you can do it with the conditional use.
Right, you add it into the conditional use, and then the owner and the lesee, I mean, the lesee can put pressure on the owner to get it cleaned up. Or, hey, this is, we have to get this cleaned up, otherwise we're not going to be able to have our conditional use. And then furthermore, if, let's say this lesee, this thing falls through.
We can revoke it.
We can still look at our ordinance and say, owner, you have to clean this up.
Why don't we just do that now directly and make the owner responsible for it?
I think you do both.
Because it really was not noticed prior to Mr. Davis coming into planning and zoning commission. I mean, he stockpiled a little bit of snow back there now and then, but not much.
Well, it's all melted, it's going to be.
Well, I don't think he put any there this year.
Well, hold on, that debris was there, it started being piled in the summer all day through fall. There was no snow, because I noticed the debris being piled up, and I drive there every single day.
Right, and.
Being piled up, now you can't tell because there's snow next to it, but I just went there and took some pictures, the snow is melting, and there's a big pile that is not melting.
I agree, there's debris there. I don't believe he brought any snow there this year, I think that was just snow that went on the debris. Regardless, the driveway is the same thing. That driveway curb cut was damaged when he put that original driveway in, and he has not been 100% cooperative with repairing it as he agreed to when they discovered how badly he had cut the curb. And this is our mechanism for getting him to comply.
So, let me ask one point for clarification here. So, let's say that we do make this, there's a conditional use. A condition of this permit is the removal of yard waste. And as you said, and thank you for pointing that out, this is a conditional use that is served to the owner and also the leases of the property. What if the owner of the property says, I'm not going to lease to you anymore, therefore, we don't need the conditional use? Does that leave the door open for them to continue and open the door for us to make another?
It does not leave the door for him to continue. It may require us other actions, whether it's citations or legal actions to get our driveway, the curb repaired to appropriate measures and to get that yard waste removed from there. There are other measures, but this is the easiest. They want something. In order to give you something, you must do this.
The leases want the conditional use, we don't know that the owner wants.
Do we really care who wants it?
I don't know.
Well, the owner wants to lease it.
I would assume so.
And how would he be able to?
Monetary stream coming in, so it would be in their interest if he wants the monetary stream to do some work. Because they're matched together, as a business owner, you would say, I'm willing to invest because I want that return.
And even if he's.
Okay, I would think so, but if I'm an owner, I'm going to do a risk assessment on it and look at what the cost of moving this is versus the value of the lesee for one season, and look at the cost of having to replace the curb. And when I, curb, and when I add this all up and look at my income stream and my priorities, it may no longer be a priority for me, therefore, I don't care if the lesee takes it. I mean, so it's a risk, right? It's a risk that we take. I'm open to what the majority of my trustee board members would suggest.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and thanks for sticking around. Is there anybody else who would like to speak to this item?
I'll make a motion to close public forum.
Thank you, I have a motion to close public forums, is there a second?
Second.
I have a second from trustee Eckert. Any further discussion from the board?
Yeah, so I think we, you know, we put all these stipulations.
Motion to close.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so I have a motion to, a motion and a second to close. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What was the motion carried six zero, if there's additional comments, please trustee Rodden.
Yeah, so, you know, we've done a great job over the last X amount of years, you know, putting in some nice facilities in that area. A lot of stipulations with some of those facilities, I mean, look at what we did for the storage people. You know, the gated fences and, you know, what we did for the apartments and some of the other people that have built on that road. And here, we're going to just allow gravel and piles of mulch, which I don't object to. However, we've put a lot of emphasis and a lot of energy into making that a new corridor and to finishing out that tiff the right way, and now we're going to put piles of mulch there. I think, I don't know if it's Michael, somebody else said it, that, you know, it could lead into something great, but I don't want to see a mobile home out there as an office. I don't know what they're planning on doing for an office, you know, I want it to look decent. You know, are they going to use jersey blocks for backstops on the mulch? Are they going to make it, are they just going to have piles of mulch? Because the way it looks down on, what is that, not wood? White pine, that doesn't look that great, you know, and that's what this is going to look like, I think. And I just have some concerns with it. Furthermore, you know, we have to regulate the signage they put out there. I don't want to see four by eight sheets of OSB with mulch $30 on them. You know, I think we need professional signs, I think that has to be run through our typical sign protocol for the village, so does that need to be included in the conditional use as well?
You can really put whatever conditions you want on it.
But.
I mean, the signage would be an issue once you get in the interior of the facility or the property. We don't really regulate, you know, 200 feet inside of a property, what the signage looks like.
I'm talking about along the highway, because obviously, they're going to want to put signs out along the highway saying mulch is X amount or whatever they're doing. Those are my concerns, is making sure the signage goes through the proper protocols so we don't have four by eight sheets of, because right now, there's broken lesee signs sitting out there. There's, I mean, it doesn't, doesn't look that appealing. And I hate to point out Michael, but Michael's right, he's putting up a huge facility right alongside this. You know, do you want an eyesore alongside a brand-new facility that's going up? And I don't think we want that, because I think what we really want is that to become the next industrial or manufacturing facility, you know, and not so much a mulch place. Those are just my thoughts.
What do you see for the building? Is there any stipulation on the building at this point?
I see them going to Home Depot and picking up a 12 by 16 yard shed with possibly, you know, one of those fancy runs with a front porch or something on it. And that's what I see them putting out there for, this is.
That's what it says here, it says a larger yard shed will be placed on the site to serve as this site.
I think they were looking at one out by Maplewood Meats, and if I recall, they had a couple of them there with that front porch looking.
Right.
Next to the sales, I remember.
Next to the porta potty that they're going to put out then.
It doesn't say anything about a porta potty on here?
It doesn't. I guess I'm a little concerned with the lack of information and what they're really going to do here. I mean, if a shed's going on there, they should have came forward with a picture of what the shed's going to be, along with backstop for.
They're not planning on any cubicles or whatever you want to call it, any bunkers for the mulch this year, I can tell you that.
See, and I think they should.
It's your first year in it, so.
I think if you're going to have a facility like that along the highway, you know, jersey blocks are literally 40 bucks a piece, you know, and for them to put those up to make it look nicer and make a few bunkers, to actually segregate the different colors. You're talking our main corridor, you're not talking up by Brown Road, you know, where we have a little bit of a mess already. You know, you're talking about a main corridor where a new manufacturing facility is going to be built, where we have high-end apartments, where we have high-end storage condos. You know, I'm afraid, trustee Andrews, I think you're right, I think they should come back with a plan, with a site layout, with what this is going to look like.
I could agree to that. It's worth the ounce of prevention for home decor type of thing.
Right, they got, I mean.
They must have forgot about it tonight.
Yeah, it would have been, it would have been helpful had they been here to answer questions.
Absolutely, well, and they got, I mean, we got a couple of board meetings here before mulch season really kicks off, so.
I was hoping you weren't going to say that. All right, so what I'm, just to summarize what I'm hearing right now, is I'm hearing that there's some concerns right here specifically to a lack of details with regard to the site plan, and the board would like to see a site plan specifically. I've heard a few things that we want to outline within that site plan, you know, the use of bunkers.
There's office?
And signage, yes, bunkers, office, and signage.
What are they going to do for a bathroom? I mean.
Well, it's going to have to be a porta potty.
Right.
But, you know, you got to place it in the right spot.
Right.
All right, so there's four elements that I heard that the board would like to see addressed specifically on the site plan. Restroom?
Sanitation.
Signage, thank you, sanitation, signage, office, the office building, and bunkers, retain, how the mulch material will be retained on the property.
And I think the applicant and the owner need to get together too, knowing that part of this condition, I mean, I think you got board buy-in to say those, that stumps and whatever else needs to be, you need to stop in it, it needs to be removed, so they can have that conversation before they come back to us.
Okay, so the last piece of this plan for those taking notes would be a plan for removal of the current debris as a condition to granting the condition.
Cleaned up one way or another, I mean, if it can be burned.
Cleaning it up either way, because pretty soon, you've got so many stipulations, this isn't going to happen, and you're still going to have that mess there.
Right, that needs to be cleaned up.
Cleaning it up either way isn't part of your approval.
No.
Whether it's tonight or at the next village board meeting. Either you grant the conditional use with that as a condition, or we take other legal means if we need to to get that cleaned up. They're two separate issues.
Yeah, but it's a violation, right?
It quite possibly is, I.
How about we have Steve look at from that end? We table this until we can get something better to address those four items.
Site plan.
Because we can, we'd go all the way around, and we're not going to get anything necessary.
So, I think we request a site plan from the.
You have a primitive site plan right now, we just, you want to see elevations of the shed, and you want to see.
More detail.
More bunker storage.
So, the overall concern that's been raised by the board is that this is a main corridor, that we have a lot of properties that are already existent there, and we want to make sure that this is a good fit, can be a good fit for that area.
I think it can be.
And those, and those elements that we discussed were those elements that we would like to see addressed as part of that concern. I mean, realistically, this is, I was sitting on planning and zoning. These are a couple of guys who want to sell mulch from a spot, you know? I don't think that they were thinking about making a large significant investment into the area to sell mulch, maybe it's not the right place unless they want to make this investment. I guess we make them, we let them decide, they're the business owners, they're the entrepreneurs. That's not for us to decide.
Right now, this is two individuals that run a yard maintenance operation, and supplying the different mulch materials and stuff goes along with what they have to do during the day. And they were just looking at probably somewhere to stockpile some of that for their other business use and then the availability for retail sale of others, but.
So, at the very least, let's get, let's invite the individuals to the next board meeting to have this discussion, and we can highlight for them the elements that we discussed tonight that we, in particular, we would like some details on, the board would like some details on.
Strongly advise them not to forget about it.
Yeah.
All right, so no motion necessary.
No, I would say it's a formal public hearing, so you should make the motion to table it to the next village board meeting, that's your notice.
I'll make a motion to table this item for the conditional use permit for parcel SU 791-4, as discussed.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor by trustee Rodden to table this item for a future upcoming board meeting. This is the sale of landscape material on SU 791-4, is there a second?
Second.
I have a second from trustee Schneider. Any other discussion from the board? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries six zero to table this item, thank you. Good discussion, thank you. All right. Moving on, item number nine, administrative items 2022, meeting dates confirmed, clerk Bartletti.
Thank you. I do have one omission and one error within my report. The omission would be November 14th is typically the budget hearing, so if you could put that on the calendar. And then my error was on the second page for New Year's Eve. It's actually New Year's Day is the date that we get off.
We'll put that in your annual review.
Does she caught her mistake? Bravo, she did good.
So, November 15th is going to be budget day, is?
14?
14.
Yeah, November 14th.
No, that's budget hearing.
Budget hearing.
Not budget day.
Okay.
Budget day is to be determined.
Okay.
And then the reason for the report was the board of review. The assessor wanted to make sure that those dates were good for you for the open book and the board of review.
Put it in my calendar.
Looking this far ahead, it's as good as it can be. Thank you for the notice, I'll get it in my calendar.
You're welcome.
Open book, no one has to be here, so it's really the board of review.
All right, so there's no proposed action, no motion necessary, this is just for our knowledge, thank you. I will take this for later follow-up, much appreciated. All right, moving on, 9B, village engineering consultant, administer Kaker.
Thank you. So, back in January, we sent out RFPs for just a general contracted engineering services. We received nine proposals back from engineering firms. We narrowed that down to three. There was staff and trustee Ward as the public works and utility liaison who interviewed those three firms. There was a unanimous recommendation from staff and trustee Ward that we continue our relationship with Ayers Associates, and we agree that they provided the best bang for the buck. While we are not looking at changing our primary engineering consultant, I'm so glad that we went through this process and we can with confidence tell the public that we did our due diligence in making sure that we're getting the best value with our consultant. Whether or not I'm here, this is a process that should be done with all of our consultants every five years or so, just making sure that we are getting that best value. The agreement looks very similar to the one that you approved last month with Ayers Associates to do our. Uh, the agreement, uh, looks very similar to the one that you approved last month with Heers Associates to do our tests well. Um, we just replaced a few words and, uh, it, it matches what we need for our, our annual agreement there as associates. Important to note that this does not bind us in any way. If there's a, a project out there for engineering that. We feel like there might be a different firm that is a, you know, specializes in flood mitigation or whatever it might be, we do have. Uh, the flexibility to go with a different engineering firm depending on the project, so. Uh, there is still a lot of flexibility here. It's just nice for us to know who we're gonna go to, like. When we have a subdivision going in and we need cost estimates, uh, to be provided to us and need a second pair of eyes, we know who our primary engineering firm is gonna be. So any questions on that one?
No, I think it was very beneficial to go through that process, cause like you're saying, I think we got to know some of the other, uh, firms in the area and. Know what their strong points were. All of them, I think, were, were fantastic, but, uh, Heers is kinda, goes above the rest.
I, I agree. I think, I think it's really good that you, that, uh. Took the time to do diligence and look at these, and look at these consultants and compare them, and I, I agree, when it comes to any other services like this. You know, three to five years, absolutely.
Heads off. I actually will make a motion to approve the master agreement for professional services with Heers Associates as presented.
Excellent. We have a motion on the floor by Trusty Rodden to approve the motion to award project two one zero one nine. To, sorry, I have the wrong note in front of me, to award the contract for, uh, Village Engineering Consultant to Heers and Associates. Is there a second? I have a second from Trusty Ward. Any further discussion from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Thank you. Alright. Uh, moving on, item ten, Recreation Department Items, item A, Idlewild Tennis Pickleball, Pickleball Project. Once again, Administrator Caker.
So, uh, it feels like a lifetime ago, uh, in May of two thousand twenty-one, we went out and solicited bids for, uh, reconstructing. The Idlewild Tennis Courts, uh, to reconstruct two tennis courts and add two pickleball. Uh, that cost was two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. We had that one bidder. Uh, the decision was made by the village board to, uh, reject that bid and try it again the next winter. And so that's what we did. Uh, we made a few modifications and, uh, added a second option to that bid package. And we received bids back on February eighteenth, uh, and this time we received three bids, uh, and each came with two options. So the first, uh, option one was to replace, uh, those two tennis courts with two tennis courts and two pickleball. And then option two was to replace, uh, just one tennis court and add four pickleball courts. So first option, the lowest, uh, bid price was a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred dollars. That was MCC Inc. And then option two, the lowest bidder was also MCC at a hundred and seventy-one thousand. The village board did budget two hundred thousand dollars for the project with twenty thousand coming from park impact fees. And the balance coming from the Stadium District Fund. My recommendation would, uh, be to go with option two. Um. We can do a lot better job at promoting the Bayport, uh, tennis courts. There's eight tennis courts out there that, uh, is open for the public to use, and I don't think we've really, um, promoted that as, as much as we could have. And then we'll still have a tennis court at Idlewild Park and two over at Calipira. And I think you'll see a lot more activity with those pickleball courts rather than the tennis courts, so I think option two is our best, best option.
And it gives you an opportunity to do basically pickleball tournaments, though.
You could. Um, and then if the village board is agreeable to one of these options, there would be two motions necessary. One to approve the contract, and then anytime you use Stadium District Dollars, there has to be a, uh, corresponding resolution that goes along with that. That's why there'd be that second, uh, motion, but happy to answer any questions or concerns of the board.
I guess, I mean, you know, you still look at the price and you're like, wow. Um. But, y- you know, we have, this is something in our parks, it already exists. We have to fix what we have. I don't really wanna make the footprint larger, though. Um. If option two is, it's not, it's not a lot larger. I don't know, I, I think.
I don't have the exact, I don't have the exact square footage, but it's, it is gonna be a little bit bigger.
A little bit.
Um, but having that four pickleball court, one tennis court option is actually the cheaper option.
I think four pickleball, I think that seems excessive.
And I, I'll bet you a dollar that if you do that, you'll see those four courts being used very heavily.
Bet me a buck.
I'll bet you a buck, yes.
Did we ever look at partnering, you know, we talked about partnering with the school district when we talk about opportunities? You know, I know where the tennis courts are at Bayport, they're high and dry. They'll not gonna have reconditioning issues like we do down at Idlewild. That's been my resounding, um, conversation throughout this is that. You know, I don't care what we do to those soils down there, uh, unless you pour a lot of money into them, you're always gonna have shifting because it's so low. Uh, there, I mean, there's water all the way around that whole park. Um, have we talked, even looked at grants potentially?
We have.
And/or working with the school district to put the pickleball courts there as a joint adventure?
Uh, we haven't looked at putting the pickleball courts at Bayport High School, no, and we've looked at grant opportunities. Uh, when you go through the USTA, uh, they don't fund anything pickleball related, and then they have their own specs that. Uh, is probably heavier duty than we need, and so you might get some grant dollars from USTA, but you're also spending a lot more to put them in.
My, I, I'm still against, I mean, you're right, Trusty Eckert, a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars is a lot of money.
But we have to fix what we have too, we can't just let it.
And I don't disagree with that.
Goal.
But I also, I also look at some of the other projects that we gotta finish up and we have an opportunity coming up hopefully. That we can address and finalize the parking issues that we are experiencing down in Vicry Village. Uh, as that area continues to get busier and busier. Um, and, and I'd rather allocate those Stadium District Dollars to that opportunity, which will impact a lot more people. Uh, than, than to, uh, you know, a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars worth of pickleball courts and. Do we even have a price on just to recondition it again?
Uh, you'd have to go out to bid. I talked to the contractor that we're using on this, uh, probably between forty and fifty thousand to put a, a top layer on it. And then, that's probably gonna last you maybe five, five years before you're seeing the cracks come through again.
How many years is this good for?
Uh, it should be good for at least twenty.
See, I, you're gonna see the cracks come through in five years on this too.
You'll see some cracks, but not to the extent there is right now.
Problem is, and, you know, the parking lot, but. We can't just let the park go either, so I don't know.
No, that's why I'd be, I'd be in favor of reconditioning it, what we have. You know, if we can do some sort of joint adventure with the school district, I mean, we did it at Bayport, those are more centrally located pickleball courts. Um, in less mosquite, mosquito-y area. Um.
What do we do with the one at the park? Will you recondition it?
Yeah, recondition the courts.
Isn't that what we did last time?
We, we did.
It is.
And it didn't last that long?
No.
No, it didn't.
We spent, I believe it was thirty grand back six, seven years ago. And already a year of five, we were saying it needs to be done. Um, because it was just a top coat. You, you didn't fix the base.
I mean, yeah, obviously I've. I've always preached that since I started, if. Reducing our debt, you know, I would love nothing more than to get at some point, you know, if I'm around long enough, a cash basis. But it's already there and. I- in the end, it's still debt. It, it, although we've set aside money for it, i- it's still, it's still debt. Uh, we could be spending it on. Something else, we, you know, uh, Lineville Road Project. But our problem is it's still there, and I think you either make a decision to bulldoze it and we don't have tennis courts, uh, cause it doesn't work out. Or you offer this and you do it right and you don't have it four times and then that's spent more than you can. I think.
Right.
I think you just spend the money this time and. This is gonna keep coming up over and over again. I think you just spend the money now and.
And I don't disagree with you there. I, my, my problem is it's, it's a lot of money.
It's a lot of money.
And, and our Stadium District Dollars, when, when I look at the impact to community, I look at, this is a particular group of individuals that will use these new pickleball courts, whereas. You know, a potential parking lot down the future, soon to be future hopefully, down by, um, Vicry Village, so, or downtown Swamaco, so we can. You know, patronize and get people down into that area and actually have a place to park. I mean, right now, if you go down there any given day, it's packed on the weekends. Uh, it's packed, you know, the summer will be packed almost every night down there and.
But until you actually get pumped, you know, you're, you're, you're.
I think.
There's not a whole lot you can do.
But I think that opportunity is coming sooner than later.
How do you know that?
I, I think that opportunity's coming sooner than later and. I'd rather use Stadium District Dollars for that, and I'm just one voice, and, and I'll vote no to, oh, no against it, and if there's five of you that vote for it, well then so be, but. Uh, that's just my opinion and my thought, thought pattern.
You know, you can use that argument either way, though, that, that only supports the people that go down there. I mean, just, you know, you're saying the tennis court only supports the people that use the court. Well, now you wanna put money into another area where, you know, potentially some of those business owners should. Ante in a little bit towards that too. We're, we're gonna fund a whole project for that? I mean, just as an example, and it's not the discussion here. Um. So. You, the Park and Rec Committee was kinda divided on option one and two. So from that standpoint, either, either one is a win, and yes, we have to fix what we have or, or dig it out.
I just wish.
I think we need to fix what we have.
That the footprint, we're making it bigger, and I, I don't like that.
I.
I don't think it should be more.
It is.
But it's less expensive. Even though it's more.
Less expensive than what?
Right, so it's a hundred, it's a hundred and seventy-one thousand.
Well, both options is gonna expand the footprint a little.
Option two is very close to the original footprint. We just don't have the dimensions here on this one. We, we had them on some other. Uh, drawings.
I think we've got a unique opportunity tonight and, and at the risk of perhaps putting our new director at, on the spot for a moment. I, I would like to know, do you, do you, in your past experience, have you had any experience with pickleball? What, is this something that you've worked on, any kind of pickleball courts or leagues?
The city of West Bend, we had existing tennis courts and on both of those existing tennis courts, we added pickleball courts. So it's tennis court and pickleball courts. And then one of our facilities, it's a softball complex, baseball complex, but it is, also has pickleball. And every Saturday morning, the pickleball courts are packed, and that's seven, there's seven pickleball courts in that facility just alone.
Who, who do you see using those pickleball courts if you don't?
It's mostly, um, more the fifty-plus adult range. Um, it is a growing sport, it's getting younger and younger, generations are also participating, you know, the grandparents with the grandchildren, introducing them to that sport. Um, so, the thing with pickleball is, you know, I, obviously it's gonna serve the community, but it is more of a specialized group. But there can be some return on investments by putting those pickleball courts in. You can do, run some leagues, you can run some tournaments, you can have clinics. Um, what, again, in West Bend, we've provided, um, you know, even pickleball clinics. Um, is, is it gonna be thousands and thousands of dollars of revenue? No, but there is some return investment that I could generate if these pickleball courts were provided. Um, so, my, my two cents, obviously I've just been here one week, would be option two. Um, to have those four pickleball courts, it'd give me a little more flexibility as far as running programs of those natures that I just mentioned, so.
Can you play pickleball well on a tennis court?
Uh, no, unless it's lined, you know, unless, unless it has the pickleball option.
Are those lines distracting to a tennis player then, or?
Not typically, no. No, cause they're, they're a little bit thinner, different color.
User preference, I would say it's annoying. Also, tennis courts are thirty-six inches tall and, uh, pickleball are thirty-four, or vice versa. There is a difference.
So, who decided that?
Do you know if anybody else around here close by has pickleball courts?
Uh, Howard is putting in a bunch, I forget how many, but they're adding some pickleball.
It's a five, five hundred thousand dollar grant.
There's a couple at Metal Brook that are continuously.
Bigger project that they got.
I take my dog walking in Metal Brook and they are always being used.
Hold up, who's getting a five hundred thousand dollar grant?
I thought it was like five hundred thousand dollars.
I think that's part of a different project, it might be at the same park, but the actual pickleball, no.
Okay.
What park is it going into?
I have to look at it. I saw it in the newspaper. Maybe Kevin knows.
So here's my point, and, and I appreciate your comments and you, you really did a, if this was an interview, you passed. I mean, you really stood up and answered the question, so. Put you on the spot and you did very well. Um, so I guess the thought, my thought process and the reason I asked this question is I know that those tennis courts saw pretty heavy use. I mean, I know individuals who live around Idlewild Park and use those tennis courts. Used to use those tennis courts until they fell apart, then they didn't feel safe using those tennis courts. So I knew that that was, that was part of the case. I look at what we did in Isle, Idlewild Park. Um, and those of you, I think most of you are on the board, when we, um, allocated money to recondition those ball diamonds. And then we look at the activity that those ball diamonds get, now that they're reconditioned and made, you know, suitable. We added features and, and upgraded our, um, the Idlewild Facility. You know, the building that we have, that is getting more and more use, even though with, with the pandemic. Um, the, the issues with the pandemic. So, to me, when we look at pickleball, um, you know, this is adding another opportunity for Swamaco and another opportunity for people to come and visit Swamaco. And use our pickleball courts, all four of them, for maybe a small tournament, right? I go to the Y on a regular basis, they're, they're always playing pickleball, you know, in the inside of the small gym somewhere, right? Um, I also work in my, in my full-time job with the aging community, and I know that pickleball is a huge, huge thing for them. It's not hard on the joints, not as hard on the joints, it's a way for them to have community, and it's something that we can do for our elders in this community. For people who maybe can't get out and use the tennis courts at, at Bayport. Um, or don't wanna go down to, you know, Vicry Village for a night out on the town, but maybe they wanna play pickleball. So, I, I think that that's, I think this is a good thing, and I think as far as the funds that we look at for this. You know, we've got twenty thousand dollars that is coming from park impact fees, and we have a hundred and, what, a hundred and seventy dollars, was it? A hundred and seventy thousand dollars? Well, the balance coming from our stadium impact fees. Of all the things that we've done on the stadium impact fees, and there's been a lot that we've done. I, I can't think of a better use for that money than to put another opportunity for people to get outside and enjoy Swamaco.
We use it on our, our website of. The, the play part.
We donated fifteen thousand dollars to the, to the new zoo, right? I mean, the fifty-over crowd probably doesn't go to the new zoo very often. So that could be considered a specialized donation. I don't think it was. I mean, it makes our community better by having that, that, that opportunity here, and I think having pickleball will make our community better by having it here.
So. I think I sense what the majority is, and that's fine. Um. I would ask, being that it's a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars, that we reduce the stadium, uh, tax fund to a hundred and fifty-one thousand. And still take the twenty thousand from that, leaving us some Stadium District Dollars. And just one other point, you know, we talk about users and user fees. Uh, you know, the ATV, UTV club footed a bill for all of the signage in this village. Um, so maybe there's some pickleball leagues that want to, uh, donate some of their funds, uh, to this, because. You know, the advocates of the ATV, UTV club, you know, dug into their pockets and, and funded that, and there's a lot of businesses that funded that as well, so. Um. Just my two cents.
I'm, I'm not sure I understand the, I'm not, I agree, your two cents are your two cents, they are, they belong to you, certainly. Good comments, thank you.
Well, I differ from you, Sky. I don't think everybody should come here and use our courts if we're gonna pay for them. Uh, that's just me. Um. You know, this isn't a tourist town, but, um. Yeah, I don't know. Um. I'm torn, but we, we do need to take care of our parks, we have to take care of what exists. Um, I was gonna ask something else and I forgot.
If there's, uh, no other discussion, I'll, I'll make a motion. To award project number twenty-one dash zero nineteen, option number two, to MCC Incorporated. At the price of a hundred, not to exceed, one hundred and seventy-one thousand. With a hundred and fifty-one thousand coming from the Stadium District Dollars and. with a hundred and fifty-one thousand coming from the stadium district dollars and the other twenty thousand coming from park impact fees.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to award project twenty-one dash zero-one-nine. Option number two, to MCC Incorporated with twenty thousand dollars coming from park impact fees and the balance from stadium tax, stadium tax fund totaling one hundred, not to exceed, one hundred and fifty-one thousand.
Can I ask what's left in the district dollars?
So, with that, yeah, that option, we would have about a little less than eighty thousand left.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
We have a second by trustee Schneider.
Roll call.
Is there any further discussion from the board? Very well, roll call, please.
Trustee Andrews?
Aye.
Trustee Eckert?
Aye.
Trustee Ward?
Aye.
Trustee Rodden?
Nay.
Trustee Schneider?
Aye.
President Venrazum?
Aye.
Motion carries five to one.
All right. Thank you. All right, discussion on future agenda items.
You guys do the motion for stadium.
Oh, sorry, there's two, right?
Yep.
All right, second motion. So, looking for a motion on the floor to utilize the stadium fund dollars.
Again, I'll state that when we got these dollars, we have done a lot of great things, just like you said, President Venrazum. We've been able to utilize almost six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for projects that, that benefit the community in its entirety, but generally just not groups of, of people. And I will be voting no on this again because I, I think there's better utilization of a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars of that money.
All right.
If there's no other discussion, I'll make a motion to utilize stadium district dollars to fund project two-one dash zero-one-nine.
Motion on the floor by trustee Schneider to use stadium, stadium tax dollars to fund project twenty-one dash zero-one-nine in the sum of one hundred and, not to exceed, one hundred and fifty-one thousand.
Mr. President, just to clarify, the motion would be to approve resolution twenty-two zero zero seven. Which.
Why don't I have?
Which is essentially stating what trustee Schneider just said. But the, the resolution.
It's on the agenda.
Authorizing the spending is.
I got it. Sorry. I don't know where my mind is at here. Sorry, just to clarify. So, the motion on the floor from trustee Schneider is the approval of resolution two-two zero zero seven, a resolution authorizing the allocation of stadium district dollars. I've got it now. Thank you.
Second.
I have a second from trustee Andrews. Please.
Roll call vote.
Thank you.
Trustee Andrews?
Aye.
Trustee Eckert?
Aye.
Trustee Ward?
Aye.
Trustee Rodden?
Nay.
Trustee Schneider?
Aye.
President Venrazum?
Aye.
Motion carried five to one.
All right. Now, item number eleven, discussion on future agenda items.
Just a point. I remember, and I don't know who was on the board, when we did the, the letter of misinformation with the DNR. And we gave that land on West Deerfield to them. And I remember conversations with our previous administrator going, "We should log that property before we sell it." And I was told exactly that the DNR would not allow that to happen because it's wetlands. What has the DNR done on that property?
Which parcel?
The parcel that we provided.
We talked about it, Alex. Is there?
West Deerfield.
Does that have to do with the?
Yes. So, they, they cleared both of their properties. And it wasn't just select cut. They clear, they clear cut.
So, why? Did they find out yet why they did that?
No.
No?
So, it's very frustrating that the DNR once again says one thing and does another.
After they got it.
After they got it from us. Because I, we had those conversations. And I know that Sky, several of us were on the board. And, and our previous administrator said, "No." The DNR said, "No." I asked him. And I said, "That's ridiculous. Why can't we log it? Because it's wetlands." That's the answer that I always got. It was wetlands. Well, it's clear cut now.
Wetlands does not prevent you from logging it. It may prevent you from logging it in the summer when you're going to be burning it up.
I agree. I agree. But we were told by the DNR that we cannot log it. And, and now they went through and logged it. And with the lumber price.
It's hard to believe because when you're in managed forest, a good portion of your managed forest is wetlands. And they require you to.
Okay, so then our previous administrator was lying to the whole board.
I'm not saying that.
Either way, either way, what I'm saying is that our village just lost out on a lot of money.
I don't know necessarily if it was a lot of money. It was, I was doing our Emerald Ash Bore Response Plan. And I had talked to Steve about it then. And I was the one who really pushed for it and said, you know, "You should start logging it right now because there's a whole lot of ash in there. Well, it still has some value. Cut it, cut it all down now." And that's what he came back to me. That was the response I got back from him, is that the DNR was saying no. And, and that would jeopardize any, I think at that time, it was starting to be fireworks of them possibly purchasing the property. And they were, I think it was more, they didn't have interest in purchasing it had, if we clear cut it. I don't know if it was so much that they were saying, "You can't cut it." They were saying, "We're not interested in purchasing it, making this land deal if you guys clear cut it." I think that was more at the time the, the issue.
But part of our deal was that we had to give that to them in that memorandum. That was part of the memorandum.
It was an exchange. It wasn't a sale.
It was an exchange. But that was, part of the deal is they were not interested in it if it was clear cut. That's, that was my understanding at the time. Not so much that they were making a, a regulatory move and saying, "You can't cut it because it's wetland."
It just, it was a point of conversation because, you know, you see them going there and clear cutting. And you're like, "We had those conversations."
Trust me, I, when I drove by, I had that same thought. It was like, hmm.
Well, we, we obviously learned something from this.
Where the tree's sick.
Well, the other thing they could have done is the couple of trees that they left in front of our, our Welcome to Swamaco sign, they could have, they could have taken those out.
Right in the way.
So, my question would be to the DNR. And this should, this should be, this could just be a question, right? So, if they're logging this off, are they just logging this off for what purpose? Because typically, when the DNR is going to log something off, their intention is that they're going to be changing the habitat where they're going to be, they, they believe they're improving the habitat, the wetland habitat. And I wonder if that's what's behind this. And that's the only reason I ask. Now, we can go back in history and, and maybe this board would like to do that. Because the history is there. I remember much of what you just mentioned and those discussions. We could go back in history and, you know, direct staff to go back in history and understand this. But at this point, what will we gain by doing that?
Oh, nothing.
I know. It's frustrating, right? But I think it does behoove us to understand, I would like to know, just from the standpoint that this is Swamaco and this is again in our corridor, right? You know, what are your plans for this piece of property? Now, you've eliminated all of these.
We can reach out.
Yep. Thank you.
What we learned is we need to get that.
In writing.
In writing from the, the certain party.
Right. Are there other issues that folks would like to discuss for future agenda items? Anything? Hearing nothing, I'd look for a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion from trustee, trustee Schneider to adjourn and a second by trustee Rodden. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries six-zero. Thank you.
Thank you.